Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Board of Commissioners' Work Session. Today is Monday, June 6, 2022. It's 7:05. Mr. Township Manager, will you call the rule?
Commissioner Gondek.
Present.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Wexler.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
If we would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to our fellow citizens, to our nation, to our people, to our justice.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Hagan. Okay, first on our agenda is a presentation from Stephen Koutziflakis, CPA with Barbara Kane Thornton and Company, to discuss our 2021 audited financial statements. Steve, welcome. Is there a button to push there? Look for a green light.
Thanks for having me.
Great.
There you go. All right, so my name is Steve Koutziflakis. I'm the partner with Barbara Kane Thornton and Company. I oversaw the audit of the township for the year ended December 31, 2021. So I'm here. I'm here to give you an overview, a high-level overview of the audit results. The draft of the audit statements will be issued later this week, and then they'll be finalized by the end of the month. So that's the timing. Just to go through it, we were engaged to audit the township's statements for the year ended June 31, December 31, 2021. We gave an unmodified opinion, or that's a clean opinion, which basically means that we feel that they're fairly present in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And we expect to issue our report this month. The standards that we followed are auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, and then government auditing standards, which pertain to government entities, where we look at your compliance with your laws and your regulations. Based on our audit, we also look at your internal controls over financial reporting for planning your audit approach. There's nothing that we came across that we consider to be a material weakness in the internal controls that we had to notify you of. So overall, we feel that the checks and balances in place are there, and your controls are working as intended. Since the township spends more than $750,000 in federal awards, we do what's called a single audit in accordance with the uniform guidance. We also gave you a clean opinion or unmodified opinion on compliance with no internal control issues noted. This past year, total federal dollars spent were $1.27 million, and the program that we looked at this past year was the ARPA funds. You spent about $300,000-some thousand through December 31. So that's what we focused on. That's how you're spending those funds. And we gave a clean opinion on compliance. We said, since ARPA funds were new, we progressed and started to focus on that, because we thought it'd be higher risk. And then the township does meet overall, meet the requirements of a low-risk audit, which means you've had single audits in the last couple of years with clean opinions and no findings noted. Some of the things you'll see in the statements when you get them later this month is your fund balances. As of December 31, 2021, your general fund ended with a fund balance of $28.78, $29 million versus $25.7 the year before. So that's an increase of about 3.1 from the prior year. Your capital projects fund decreased by 2.1. We used your money for planned expenses, capital projects. That's kind of what that fund is for. This year, some ARPA funds were received, your first tranche this past June. As of December 31, $9.5 million of that has not been spent. So that's shown as an under deferred revenue in your statements. It'll be picked up as revenue when you have expenses, the, you know, the expenses offset to match that revenue. And then finally, you get a CDGB fund that had a balance of $3,000 at year-end. With your general fund, the breakdown of that $28 million number that I mentioned to you before, $18.3 million of it is unassigned. That basically, unassigned means unrestricted, unreserved. You can basically use it for any purpose you so please. The next biggest bucket is your committed, $8.2. That's that budgetary reserve portion you set up per resolution every year. And $1.9 is restricted. That's funny, that's restricted by statutes. A lot of that is your liquid fuels money. That's not spent at year-end. It's part of that $1.9. And then your restricted, or your non-spendable is your prepaid. It's fund balancing here that's not in a spendable form, such as like prepaid expenses. That's just to break out. Some trends from year to year, the general fund had revenues for 2021 of $47.8 million versus $45.3 the year before, and your expenses came in a little over $44 million this past year versus $43.4 the year before. On your revenue side, overall revenue increased by $3.8 million in the general fund. The biggest pieces of that by far are charges for services, $2.6. That's SCADIM, your recreation. A lot of those programs really got up and running again in 2021. 2020, they were shut down. And then your transfer tax revenue was up $1.1 million from the previous year. And we've kind of seen that across those municipalities, building permits and transfer taxes seem to be up. Expenses decreased by $1.9 million from the previous year. It's kind of spread across the line. Nothing really jumps out as a big factor there. And then finally, the general fund that was passed planned to use $2.9 million in fund balance. Your actual results came in with a surplus of $3.1 for the previous year. So revenue exceeded your budget by $3.4. Budgets, expenses were under by $3.9, and then you had an unbudgeted transfer of $1.3 to your capital projects fund. So some of that surplus was transferred to your capital projects fund. Sore Fund ended the year with a net position of, or this is, Sore Fund had revenue of $4.8 this year versus $4.5 the year before, and $3.3 in expenses versus $3.7 the year before. So really, you know, kind of flat over the last couple of years. And then finally, with your pension plans, you'll see in the report, as of 12/31/21, your police pension fund was 82% funded, and that's consistent with what it was in the previous year. And then your non-uniform plan is 88.4% funded versus 92.2% funded the year before. A lot of that has to do with market results and different things. And then finally, you've seen your statement, the township has no paid liability of $56.6 million, up for $54.40 the year before. That's your benefits for retirees. That's not pension-related, based on the actuary report. There's other communications. We did have a couple of minor expected audit adjustments during the audit. We helped Amy post those entries for your pension and paid liabilities from the actuary reports. But other than that, we did get cooperation from management. Everything we asked for, Amy uploaded to us timely, so it helped the audit move along smoothly. And Amy did see the results before this meeting, so everything I'm saying here, she's, you know, she's concurs with.
Any questions? Anything in these slides that you'd want to bring us our attention to, you know, in the more specific report, or is this?
These are things I thought were important. The report is very, you'll say it's hundreds and some pages, but I thought was the important thing. You found fund balance in your budget results, and this, you know, overall, where our opinion was in your statements.
Anything alarm you?
No. Yeah, not here.
I would just, you could confirm this if you'd like. You did, we did show the funded status of pensions. And while there was a slight decrease from 82.3 to 82.1 for the police pension, which is significantly larger than the non-uniform pension, which went from 92.2 to 88.4, still the numbers 88.4 and 82.1 put us in the real upper echelon of municipalities in Pennsylvania with regard to the percentage of funding of their pension obligations. Is that right?
Yes, correct.
And whatever the reason for those reductions was not anything that surprised you?
No. 2020, a lot of the plans had a good year because of the way the market was, and then 2021 was not as good. But that's a large driver of this. It's basically the total liability that the actuary calculates compared to what you have in trust to fund that liability. The difference is, you know, the unfunded piece.
So those decreases in percentage funding were more a consequence of market activity than any kind of unusual withdrawal or blow to our, or demand on our fund as opposed to a decrease in its value?
Correct.
Commissioner, if I could add just on that point, another factor in that was we had our actuarial evaluation, which is done every two years, and we reduced the assumed rate of interest. We had been assuming an 8%, and we went down to 7.5%, which is beneficial for the plan. It's, our assumptions are not as high, because we can't always achieve those high returns, as if, as in this year, we're probably not going to achieve those high returns. So that also is added to the slight reduction in our funding value, as did the mortality tables were updated. People are living longer, things like that on both plans. So those two items also added to the slight reduction.
So both of those moves are, would be considered, you know, conservative in nature and reflect well for the future of the funds? Does anybody else have any comments for Mr. Koutziflakis? Any questions?
If I may, I just wanted to say thank you. This is Barb Kane Thornton's sixth year with us, so by administrative code, we have to rotate. So it has been a pleasure, and your firm has always been very professional and easy to work with, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you very much.
You have, thank you. You've shown an extraordinary level of professionalism, and our township is better for having had you serve it. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
So moving on in the agenda, at the last meeting, people may or may not recall a discussion, some issues raised by members of the audience, as well as people on the board, about how we handle our citizens forum with regard to time for speakers, for non-agenda items, speakers for agenda items. And as I promised at that meeting, I wanted to put it on this agenda, so it was something that we could discuss. I could lay out for the public what my understanding right now of what it is we do. I think one of my colleagues might have done some research on what other townships do around us. I have some information about citizens' participation in Philly. So I will start this discussion, but I encourage all of my colleagues to ask or say or opine or interrupt on any issue they can think of with regard to it. Currently, how we, how this board operates with regard to, with regard to the citizens' forum, and the opportunity for any citizen who have a township to speak before this board, the way we accommodate that obligation is two ways. We provide at the start of our meeting, after a couple of preliminary things, but before the board takes any official action outside of proclamations or things of that nature, we provide in advance the opportunity to call the township and indicate that you would like to speak in the citizens' forum on a non-agenda item. We have set aside 20 minutes and ask people to confine their comments to three minutes. Three minutes is not a deadline that, in my lifetime, that anybody here has enforced religiously, but we do try to keep people to that time. The idea being that those folks are speaking not on an item that we would be actually acting on that night, but it's anything that they would like to discuss. They certainly are free to talk about something that we would be talking about that night, but it is, it is an opportunity for someone to get up and speak before the board on any issue that they'd like to talk about. Then we hold a session for anybody who'd like to speak on agenda items. We also ask folks to confine themselves to three minutes in those comments. That is an absolute requirement for us as a board. Before we can act formally on any agenda item on our agenda, we need to allow the public the opportunity to comment on that. And this very work session that we're having right now is a product of, over the last two decades, the realization that we were not giving the public enough opportunity to see, to know in advance what the board was going to be considering at a meeting. So that's why we started work sessions, was so that we laid out the agenda for the previous, for the following week. And then we, as commissioners, would invite a comment from different departments in the township or other people who could advise us on the issues in advance of our formal hearing, our formal action for any item. And then any member of the public who got a chance to watch the work session, whether they attended it or watched it on television, could be better informed and perhaps then more effective in their advocacy and speaking before us in the, in our regular meeting where we take action. So the agenda items, we say that we limited to 20 minutes, but we have never, as far as I remember, we have always invited anybody in the audience who has something to say on one of the agenda items to speak on that specific agenda item. We have certainly had meetings where an issue has come up that has, that generates a great deal of public comment, maybe for, maybe against. We have had, and we've heard all comments, we've invited all comments from folks before we've acted on that. We also then, at the end of the meeting, reopen the floor to any citizen who did not get the opportunity, whether they didn't sign up, or whether we ran out of time, or comments on non-agenda items, to speak again before the board on any topic they would like to discuss. So that is currently how we operate, and I wanted to use this time to hear any considerations from my, any other alternatives or comments or suggestions from any of my colleagues about whether or not we should change that, whether or not there are ways to improve it. And so I invite those, I invite that now.
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Trombetta.
I've given careful consideration to this, and as you noted, I did perform some research, actually, over the past day or two, looking into how other nearby townships held their meetings and how they limited the conversation. I stand in support of continued three-minute limitation for anybody who, and I'm sure many of you who are sitting on this board or over to the side, have been in those things that lasted until 1:00 a.m. And there's a reason for having three-minute limitation, allowing people to stay to the point, but still getting their argument across. That said, in the research, I did see some practices from some of our neighboring communities that gave me insight into the idea that we could potentially allow for more opportunity for the public to have their input heard. Specifically, some of the things that I heard and liked were that Upper Marion, for example, pulls the audience when they have a very large group of people in the meeting. They, if somebody comes up and speaks and they see that this is, you know, that there might be support in the audience, they then ask them to raise their hand and give them the opportunity to maybe express their support without necessarily having to speak publicly. Lower Marion, the best practice that I took from them is, and this is something that I've mentioned in the past, is that they offer a hybrid model, allowing people to participate virtually via Zoom, giving them an opportunity to express their support or opposition to something without having to be physically present. I think during the time of COVID, that makes sense. I think it makes sense for anybody with a disability, any, you know, for older adults, or individuals with childcare needs. So that's something that I would support, too. So that said, you know, I think this is a great opportunity for us to consider ways that we can continue to expand public participation. And I think there's much that we can learn from our neighbors in the community. So, thank you.
Any, any time limits or something you want to share with us in terms of any of that research or?
Well, I have to say that we were more on the restrictive side. So I was familiar, actually, you know, I used to work in Pittsburgh, so Pittsburgh does have a three-minute time limit. Lower Marion has a three-minute time limit, but they do allow for three-minute comments both in their regular board meetings and in their work sessions and in, you know, any of their, I guess, their committee meetings as well. So that's something to consider also. Upper Marion has no limit on time, no time limits for new issues, but on old issues, they limit it to five minutes. And then Tridifferent Township has no time limits. So we're on the restrictive side, but I have seen that, you know, this is considered, three minutes is pretty standard practice, just maybe not in our community. But so I, you know, I believe that government is best when we do get public opinion. So, you know, I do think that, like I said, is an opportunity to consider how we can expand that public participation option. Thank you.
I do know that Philadelphia, and I will give you the floor in a second, Mr. Quinn. I don't know what Philadelphia City Council does. I know that they have, with regard to timing. I do know that they don't have public comment in their working session, but they do invite public comment in their official session. I know that the Philadelphia School Board within the last year has, has set their time limit for two minutes per public comment. Now, I think two minutes is, I mean, I can't say God bless you after somebody sneezes in two minutes, so I don't.
I can't even say a word in that amount of time.
So with that intro, Connor, the floor is yours.
Well, back in the day, and Larry and Bill can attest, too, when the meetings would go to one or two, it was not because of the people that spoke, it was because of the board then.
So I'm going to push back a teeny bit, only that some of them were because of the people. But yes, some of them were because of some of us on the board. Yeah, absolutely. And I said us, unpermitted.
But I think that we should extend it to five, five, or five, 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 or five minutes. I think that, as we've seen, like every time that everybody speaks, they go over some sort. And I don't see what the harm is in just to extend that, end it to five, and then they're, and then they can finish up just to add some time, because a lot of the time you hear the beep, and then I think that scares them a little bit. We can, and then they go, go on for more time.
Surely, fair point.
And, and I know in, in the other towns, like some towns that I've looked at, that they either have five or they don't have any time. I don't think it's good not to have any time, because then they can continue to go on and on and on, and that might not be good for anybody. And I know in towns, they have you speak before they vote on everything. There are some that they call the, or they call people if there's anything that they
Oh, so each item?
Yeah, yeah. So that, I don't think we need to go there, but, but that's what a lot, a lot of towns have, because of some that could not get here in time. But I'm all for to extend it, end it to five, five, or five minutes, I think.
Like any parent, you say 11, so you hope your kid gets in before midnight. When you say midnight, you know you're up till one. So, you know, that's a, it's a fair point. And like I said, I don't think any one of us, we've certainly tried to make the alarm quieter at three minutes. And, but, you know, four minutes, five minutes, there's an arbitrariness to what we set. I do think, I do think there's a benefit to setting a limit so that people are under, you know, some, some pressure to distill their, their comments. And of course, you know, the other thing we encourage folks to do is if several, you know, if several neighbors want to speak on a particular issue, there is no problem for all three of those people to get up and have one spokesman speak for the three of them and speak for 10 minutes, you know, to get all their points in and do it in, do it in one presentation. But it's, no, it's, it's an excellent point about the timing. I mean, three minutes, three minutes and 20 minutes doesn't even work in terms of simple math. So, you know, there's, if we made it a five-minute thing and did, and set a half hour as the limit, if we did a four-minute thing and said, you know, 28 minutes, I think it's important to allow a number of speakers. You know, we don't want to cut the list off at five.
Yeah. But if we have one signed up to speak, and we can give them all the time in, like they, that they need, I mean, if there is, like we, like a week, or last month when we had, or some issues, and we had to cut somebody off at some point, or like we could have extended, ended it like, like if she said, I have four more minutes to spur that I need to get this out.
That's an excellent point, yeah. Any other thoughts, Commissioner Wexler?
I, I think it's our duty to listen to people. So I think it's there. I think the criticism in this issue came up is because the alarm went off. And I know I was kind of astounded afterwards, when we did it, she was the only registered speaker that evening. There was really no need to cut her off on a hard three minutes. I think we rely, since you're in the seat this year, it's your judgment call. When we know what's on the agenda, you have the list of registered speakers, we're going to rely on your judgment to allow that person. She was a very elegant speaker. She stated in the beginning that she was speaking on behalf of her neighborhood. So I think right there, we had a common sense judgment to make that, hey, she's going to go a little bit longer because she's speaking for the entire block that she was speaking for. And I think that's, that's incumbent upon us to listen to them, because she was representing a neighborhood at that time, and she was the only registered speaker. So we knew the 20 minutes allocated to registered speaker, we have to do it. So I think it's just a common sense issue. The, as Connor had said, we've never gone up, since we've instituted the work sessions, we haven't had an 11 or 12 o'clock meeting. The whole purpose of the work sessions was for us to understand the admissions, and we could ask questions without the threat of having to take action that evening and be able to get explanations from the engineers, public works, and those things. So I think if we just, we got to rely on your common sense judgment, knowing who's registered. We also have to look at the agenda that evening. If there's a, if the room's full, then we're going to adjust, and the three-minute becomes more of a hard and fast rule. But generally, there's less than a handful of people in our meetings, and I think it's incumbent upon us, if everybody here this evening wanted to speak, you know, if it was a judgment meeting, I would have no problem. I got elected to listen. I'll sit here until everyone gets their say before I vote, if that's what we need to do. But it's just common sense judgment, and we rely on you to handle the organization of meeting. I think it's just a common sense thing. I don't think we're, I think we're going to spend a lot of time talking about this that we don't need to, and I think we can just, but I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to listen and...
But we've not reexamined this in my lifetime. So, I mean, you know, since I've been on this board. So I think it's worth speaking about. Your points are excellent. And, and so, I mean, the whole purpose of this, of putting this under discussion right now, was to hear this and to say it out loud in front of folks as opposed to just in the back, so people understand we're, we take this very seriously.
But I think we use our judgment to grant them the audience that they...
Your point about the work session is a very important one. And I, I would, I would be reluctant to, to open the work session to, to public participation. Our goal specifically in setting up the work session was to, was to give folks the opportunity to see us debate the issues, because, I mean, this is where we do a lot of our, you know, whether we'll say arguing, refining, anything about the issues that are, the ordinances that are in front of us, the issues that are in front of us. And, and another very important part about our work sessions is that we take no official action at these work sessions. We do not pass resolutions. We don't provide proclamations. We don't, and with the exception of an emergency, and every municipality is allowed to deal with an emergency, like passing, you know, spending money or doing something like that because of, because of a natural disaster. But other than that, we take no official action at this meeting, and that was exactly how they were designed. So it wasn't a way to get around public comment. It was actually a way to provide the public a better opportunity to see, you know, to see us discuss and debate these issues. So I have, I have no problem with, you know, any kind of changes or considerations we want to make to the public participation at our regular meeting. I do think the work sessions should stay.
That was not suggested.
Yeah, as we've defined, no. And I, and I was picking up on your point, that it was the work sessions that have, that have streamlined things that we've, that we've done here.
Can I interject?
Yeah, absolutely.
I would honestly push back a little bit. I would like to have some public comment opportunities on agenda items only during a work session, because... because there are some cases where I have learned about something or had questions that came up that I really wanted to have answered. And a week, that week would, that intervening week would give me a little more time to do some more research. So I, I would welcome that, a limited time for agenda items only.
I agree.
The whole purpose of our work session is to bring our staff here, to get your questions answered by the experts that are bringing the ordinances, the resolutions to us. So we have, if we have a question on a development or planning, we have the planning person, we have the engineer here, we have the finance director, we have the township manager. So I think, I mean, that's the whole purpose of the work session is for us to get our questions answered so that we can make intelligent decisions for our constituents. I think, and I think the work session has been a good, a good thing for the township over the years. It's, it's a second meeting for all of us, which was a big change. I was fought hard on this by half the thing when I instituted it back then. And I, but I think it's, in the long term, it's been, it's been very helpful for all of us to get, have the staff available to answer the questions, the technical meat that we need to know.
Mr. President? I guess I would just say, if we're talking about the need for public comment, it does make sense that we would have a little bit more chance to engage with the public during our work session. I understand the reasoning that everyone's talking about, and I really hadn't considered it. But there are cases where it would be helpful to know some of the concerns before we are to vote. So I, I agree with that.
But I, I get that too. But with these meetings, I believe that there is a time limit.
Yeah, by statute, we're limited to 90 minutes for this meeting.
Yeah, so that's an issue too, that I think that.
The only other piece I would like to say is, we are talking about a public forum and public comment, and we really haven't inquired from the public about how they might want to engage with us. And I'm not trying to open this up any more broadly than we need to, but we are talking about ways to make ourselves more accessible. So it might make sense to have more of that public engagement for our work session.
If I could interject briefly, I, one of the thoughts, I feel very strongly that, you know, people should have the right, you know, in our, in our government to be able to participate and have their voices heard in some form or fashion on topics that are of relevance or of concern to them. Whether we ultimately settle on three minutes or five minutes, I, I don't really have a, a, a strong opinion either way on terms of those time limits. One thing I would suggest, though, for us to consider as a way to address both the work session conversation that's going on here now, and also the ultimate time limit conversation, is to allow or to incorporate the ability for people to participate via either email or correspondence. I think the school district actually even accepts voicemail. I don't, I don't know the, the full extent of it. But to allow people to participate in methods other than just, you know, showing up in person and having their voice heard, allow them to, you know, send in an email or a letter that would then be incorporated as part of our official record.
It's an excellent point. And during COVID, we got into the practice of reading aloud comments from folks who, you know, could not by definition appear here at the time our meetings were closed to the public. I, there are, there are, there are just some purely mechanical and logistical issues that occur, that, that arise when we try to have Zoom participation at the same time that we have live coverage with our meetings. But that, you know, for purposes of somebody who would like to say something at the meeting and can't because, because they can't physically be here, there are substitutes to Zoom participation that won't, don't necessarily generate the, generate the electronic or other problems that could be associated with the Zoom, and we could certainly accommodate. We've, we spent all of COVID reading, you know, reading letters aloud. And, you know, we could put a word limit, we could, you know, try to, you know, try to keep, you know, letters not to, you know, 20-page, 15-minute conversations. But, but, I mean, this is all, this is all an opportunity. And it, no, I wouldn't want the public to think that this is a discussion of whether or not we want public participation. I, I think this is a board, it's 2022 now. We all have multiple email addresses that we, that we publish. We all have township cell phones that we publish on the website. I, I, from my own experience, it, it looks to me like members of the public and constituents aren't shy about, about their comments and about their suggestions on some of the things we do. And, you know, again, this is a work session, so there's no decision to be made tonight. But these are all things for us to think about. We do have, we have set forth by ordinance how we handle these things, which means by ordinance, we can change them, and we could set new rules. And I think these are all, all excellent points. I, Bill brought up the staff, and I do think this is a fair point. There have been times in the past, issues in the past, where an issue arises in the township. It is not an agenda item issue, but it is an issue that generates a great deal of, of, of thought and of reaction and controversy. You know, one of the things I do think about, all nine of us chose to run for this office, get elected to this office, we know it's a nighttime job. But our staff in the township all work full daytime jobs. And so if twice a month, and then if they're going to constituent meetings for, you know, individual neighborhood association or, or commissioner meetings for any constituents, they're adding to the number of nights a month that they are here. So I am reluctant to, you know, to add the potential of a couple three-hour meetings for these folks on the first and second Monday night as well. There was a great deal of thought and hand wringing went into us finally creating work sessions. And I think the work session, I think the work session model really works. And I'm not sure I want to trifle with that. I do think there are plenty of ways for us to improve public participation without having to dip into the work session, but can do that at our regular session. But again, this is a discussion. I'm curious what other people think, and it's obviously something we're going to incorporate into, you know, potentially a new, a new ordinance. Anybody else have any, and, and an important thing, Mr. Gondik, you, you started off by saying, you know, can you interject? I think Commissioner Cavender, you did the same thing. There's, there's no interjecting up here. This is a work session, all nine of us are, are here for a reason. Take the floor, speak, you know? There's nothing to apologize for. You're not interjecting, you're doing your job.
Then I'll, then I'll jump in with one last comment on the topic. I would, as a suggestion, I would put out there that whether we stay with the three minute or we expand it to some other time limit, as a suggestion, possibly be able to give the speakers a, a warning. So let's just say it's the three minutes is what we settle on. At two minutes, they get a little warning. So, you know, some speakers come with pre-prepared notes, some kind of freestyle it a little bit more. Maybe if we tell them they've hit their two minute, they've had one minute left, they might by default kind of wrap it up on their own.
Right, anybody who's watching this meeting right now, and it's the first meeting they've ever watched, would get the wrong impression about how we do things. It was not some piercing fire alarm that went off when, when the conversation was rough, it was interrupted a month ago. And if I went back and actually looked at my stopwatch, it was about four minutes and 35 seconds before I, I asked her to, to, to wrap, before, I'm sorry, before I asked the, the speaker to, to, to wrap up her, her comments. And, but no, Bill Wexler raises an excellent point, which was, I, there was no need to be in a hurry to get to the next person since there wasn't one. And we have, in the past, had people come back up, if it is an agenda item, and that was an agenda item, and speak again on the same topic and finish out the topic.
And there have been times where we would just, would add the three, three, or three minutes for when they were speaking. I remember there were a few times for, for Dr. Levin.
Oh, yeah, and not, yeah, right, and that, that's right. Add the three minutes now for, for the agenda time. And, and so, but, so I, again, I just want, I want the public to understand this is not some encounter session we're going through now of some great sin we committed a month ago. It's just was raised, and I thought it was, it provided the perfect opportunity for us to reexamine the rules we've lived under and question, you know, what, what, what concerns did they originally address? Are those concerns still out there? Are there new concerns that technological? I mean, imagine nobody five years ago was saying, do you think we can have people talk by Zoom? People would be like, what? So, you know, that is, what makes this a very healthy exercise?
I was going to say, we, we're 40 minutes into a 90-minute meeting, and we've got a bunch of other stuff that we need to get to and.
Yeah, but I, but I, I'm also exercising my discretion here, Commissioner Wexler, because some of these, I really don't think anyone's too concerned about our settlements to the real estate stuff. The next item is also something I put on the list. But actually, sorry, Bill, is there anyone else who has anything to say at this point about our citizens' forum?
I do.
Yes.
I would like that we always emphasize civility and respect to anyone coming before us to, to speak. Not just, we always ask, we, we conduct ourselves with that, but also all our audience members. So that anyone who comes up feels welcome and included.
Yes, and, and as I did with some degree of seriousness, brought out the big gavel a couple of meetings ago to remind folks what our reasonable expectations are of one another when, when, when you come up to the podium and speak, and more important, when you sit in your chair and listen to somebody else who gets up to the podium and speaks. And we've not had, I don't think we've had a great deal of disruption, but we've had it. We've had conduct that was regrettable. And I've certainly seen things in the past that were, that I'd rather not relive. But, you know, so far, so good, and onward and upward. Anybody else on this topic? I had also put the next topic on for consideration, and that is traffic calming devices. I spoke with, with our township engineer, Mr. Panoni, just today. We had a funny conversation about how many years ago was it that he put on this terrific presentation about traffic calming devices? And he looked it up, and it dates back to when Connor was in grade school. Bill and I were the only two members of this board who got to hear that presentation from Dave, because it was all the way back in 2009. And I, I had taken a look at our, I took a look at our ordinance because I realized that I had been operating under some misconceptions about, about our authority to introduce different traffic calming measures into neighborhoods and on our streets. And I took a closer look at our ordinance. My own street hosted speed humps for the last two summers. We did not qualify for them this year. We had relaxed for temporary purposes over the last couple of years because of the Ardmore Avenue Bridge work and because of the work on Wynwood Road, some of the restrictions on that. But I wanted, this wasn't the goal of resolving anything today, but I wanted to raise the issue of traffic calming devices and ask us to reexamine that statute and to invite Mr. Panoni sometime between now and, and our July meeting to share with us an updated presentation, maybe send it to us in advance and something we could discuss at the, at the July session. All the different, all the different mechanisms that are available for traffic calming purposes. Most people think of speed humps immediately. There are also the circles that are installed in, in, in Marion Gulf. There are, some neighborhoods have, have fences that go halfway across the road, so it requires kind of a serpentine effort to get through a street. There are a variety of ways. There are speed tables as opposed to speed humps. There are permanent humps that can be put into the road. There are temporary ones that were, that were installed on Chestnut Avenue and were put in in, in the spring and taken out in the late fall. These are, and, and then there are the, there are the parameters we set by ordinance as to whether or not a street or a neighborhood is entitled to traffic calming measures. And I have spoken with Chief Viola and want us to examine that, to see whether those restrictions are too high. Currently, for a street to be considered for a speed hump or some other traffic calming device, it has to average over 1,000 cars a day. The, the problem with that is that, once you introduce the speed humps and traffic reduces down to that, the following season, when it's time to put them up again, if you test the road, you may find that you've reduced traffic enough that you're no longer qualified for the speed humps, and you kind of end up in a cycle of every couple of years, you got to put humps up again. And then, of course, there is simply the policy decision that we have to make as a board as to whether or not it is our overarching policy to just direct all local traffic to our major roads and, and try to discourage as much, you know, as much traffic through our side streets as possible. That is, you know, that's a serious consideration, you know, that we have to undertake if we ease the restrictions on being able to put, making it easier to put traffic calming and traffic slowing devices into, into our roadways. So it is, it was not my expectation today that we would, that we would have any formal presentation on this, but I, I wanted to bring it up to everybody's attention. I did speak with, with Engineer Panoni about updating his, updating his report on that, because it's really, it's a really good report, it's exhaustive, it, it, it incorporates, pen dots, suggested, pen dots, I, I don't want to say regulations, because these aren't mandatory, but it is their guidelines for purposes of traffic calming. And because I, 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 we've all now heard enough from our constituents about our concerns about how many cars cut through, you know, very thin neighborhoods. We've got a lot of streets with parking on both sides of the road. We have a great deal of traffic going on our major roads and quite a few people who want to divert into our smaller roads. And we, as a board, need to address, we need to evaluate what our power is. We need to be informed what our power is. We then need to evaluate how we want to exercise that, and we need to fully understand the ramifications of exercising that power. So I won't end the discussion without providing anybody else the opportunity to comment on it. And, but I do expect before our July meeting that we'll see an updated presentation on various traffic calming devices. And I will have our current ordinance circulated to all the members of the board to consider before the next meeting.
Mr. President?
Yes, I'm going to start with Commissioner Cavender, and then I've got you, Commissioner Hart.
So I know that the requirements were changed for the Ardmore Avenue Bridge. So what are the downsides to changing them back? Like why, why would we let them expire and not still make it easier to calm traffic?
Well.
What are the downsides to?
The downside to that, because they were very specific geographically to that, to, 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 to areas around the construction sites, the area around Ardmore Avenue. So the issue would be that we would be relaxing the restrictions on a handful of streets and still maintaining the restrictions on all the others. This was not a relaxation township-wide. This was specifically geographically targeted. Now, correct me if I got that wrong, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Manager Berman.
That is correct.
So you would be talk, so you, I'm sorry, so you would be talking about relaxing them for the whole township now?
Yeah, and I say relaxing, the question is whether we want to reevaluate them. The question is whether, you know, are they, are they still good? Are we, is, is 1,000 cars a day? You know, 1,000 cars a day on County Line Road is one thing. 1,000 cars a day on Lorraine is another. 1,000 cars a day on Woodcrest is a whole another story. And that's, that's, that's what we have to, that's what we have to evaluate and take very seriously when we're, when we're considering changes to it. But I, my own personal opinion right now is that our ordinance is too restrictive, that it's very difficult for people to be able to successfully, you know, petition for and get traffic calming devices. A lot of people want them. It's easy to satisfy the requirement under there to have 80% of a certain street or block approve them. But it's another story to actually satisfy the objective criteria that's in there. The police have the ability to just declare an emergency or declare a safety issue that, you know, that would override the restrictions. But that places, no offense to you, Deputy Chief Hankman, that just puts too much discretion and too much. Chief Hankman, that just puts too much discretion and too much pressure on the police to be deciding street by street whether it's an emergency or not. We need, it's not, it's not their job, and frankly, it's not fair to them to put on them the burden of saying whether this is dangerous enough to warrant the work. We should do it as a policymaking body. Commissioner Hart?
Yeah, I think it's an excellent topic. We have no work session in July, so I-
Oh, nice reminder. Well, let's talk about it at our big session anyway. I mean, let's at least get all the information. I don't know if we're gonna make changes this quickly, but we don't have one in July? We also not have one in August?
No, we do have one in August.
You used to flip that around.
I think the 4th of July is, might be a Monday.
Oh, okay, so we're just doing the 11th as our regular meeting, okay? And not the 5th as a work session, okay?
I'd also just push back a little bit. I think, in my experience, getting to the 80% is not easy on a block. It's not as simple as just saying, we all want speed humps. I mean, I think there are certain people that would not want a speed hump in front of their house, for example.
Oh, yeah, that's one of the restrictions I'm absolutely gonna put on this, is that everybody who signs a petition saying, I want to have speed humps in my street, every one of them has to also say, and if it has to go in front of my house, it's okay in front of my house, because I had it, I put it in front of my house, and because it was the right thing to do. And it is a major pain, and it's, they're not, yeah, they are.
I just think that they're-
So, yeah, I'm not suggesting that it's an easy, but it is easier, in a lot of situations, to satisfy that part of it. The neighbors can do whatever they can and undertake any efforts they can to get to sell this, but then they run into the bar of what I think are pretty high standards, high restrictions in our statute, and that's what I, in our ordinance, and that's what I'd like us seriously to reevaluate.
And I don't want to come off as anti-traffic control devices, but, you know, I think it is important to consider, you mentioned the PennDOT regulations. We have some small streets, and there are some safety concerns that go along with that, and those regulations exist for a reason. It's not as simple as just saying, you know, PennDOT's trying to impose their will on us. For some of the streets, the distance requirements, the parking requirements of these, they're important regulations.
Absolutely.
The ones that we should consider, it's not just simple to set aside.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
I just, I, not that I disagree with anything or the need to have these discussions, certainly I get plenty of calls in the Third Ward, about every street in the Third Ward, but I just think it's, there's some real legitimate issues, including, you know, how emergency vehicles get up and down streets, how plow trucks, trash trucks, everything, in terms of it being in front of your house is a whole nother factor.
Sure. Every UPS truck and-
Prevalence of every FedEx, UPS, Amazon truck bouncing up and down your street every day, so.
Yeah, yeah. It was a reminder of all the china we don't use in our china closet that would, you know, clang together every time Amazon drops up on-
Just wanna say some of these things, some of this out loud, and it's, I don't disagree with discussing it in July, but I do think it's one that's worthy of a work session to give us-
Yeah, absolutely.
The additional time, that there's not the time crunch of a voting session.
Yeah, then what we can do, then, I mean, there's no reason to withhold, I mean, let's get as much information in front of us as we can, updated stuff. Let's all look at the ordinance, we'll circulate it to everybody. Commissioner McCluskey, I'm with you 100%. There are, there is a consequence to every move we make under these things and making these easier, and it's not, it's something we have to seriously evaluate, as it is. It is very difficult to go from Haverford Road to Route 3, to Westchester Pike on any Saturday in this town, and if we make it even harder to, you know, to capitalize our traffic, you know, to go into other side streets, we're just going to make things more difficult in our major thoroughfares. We have to recognize that. And there are some people who live on those major thoroughfares. You know, Ardmore Avenue is, for the most part, residents. Actually, it's all residents. Lorraine, with the exception of a school, is all residents. County Line is half as many residents as it is, as it is businesses, Haverford Road as well. So, those are excellent points, Kevin, and you will not stand alone in raising them and, you know, suggesting that they need, you know, serious scrutiny. So, we will plan to have a more serious conversation about this at our August work session with the idea of potentially, you know, with the idea of addressing and perhaps amending our ordinance for the first time at our August, at our August meeting. Any other comments from my colleagues? Commissioner Committee updates, do any commissioners have any updates from their committees?
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Trambetta.
I will be organizing a meeting of the Environment Committee to discuss the composting ordinance that the Environmental Advisory Committee gave, set before us, advised us to consider.
Great, and when you, there are some folks who have memories of composting, the big composting pile, in the First Ward or the Ninth Ward. If I understand correctly, what we're talking about is, we're trying to revise our ordinances to the extent that those ordinances really stood as an impediment for people to be able to compost in their own, on their own property.
Right, this is specific to backyard composting.
And that is something we expect to consider for the first time at the July meeting?
That is my hope.
Since we don't have a work session in July, are there, is there any, do we want to at least discuss the potential parameters of what are going on here, the theme, or have we already done that?
I think it's probably worthwhile to wait till July.
Deputy Chief.
I think Sherry had a committee update.
Wait, I'm sorry, what?
Sherry is reporting in the library.
Oh, I'm sorry, but just stay right there. You just make us feel better. I'm sorry, we have another committee report.
Yeah, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Library Annual Association Meeting, but I could do that in this meeting or next meeting, which is your preference.
Is it an announcement, or is it, are we addressing actions we're taking?
No actions, just a report on what happened at the association meeting, and the President of the Board wanted to, I wanted to read a portion of his report as he expresses thanks for the support the commissioners have given the library over the whole planning stage.
Well, since it's a pretty good bet that the folks who are willing to come to a work session usually pay attention to and come to our regular sessions, and then there's a number of people who just come to our regular sessions or watch them on TV, that may be better suited for next week.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Does anybody else have any other report? Deputy Chief, before you give our Police Department crime update, let me, on behalf of a lot of people, let me ask you, if you can just provide to us some information and some assurance about how our local PD and our local school district work together, have worked together, continue to work together, to respond to and deal with the shooting we saw in Texas, or frankly, all the shootings that we're seeing. Last week has, I think has shaken some people's, have shaken some people to the core, has shaken some people's confidence, and I think it's very important for us to appreciate and understand the ongoing efforts of the PD and the school district specifically, but just the PD on handling crises like we saw down there, shootings.
Let me start off saying we have two officers. Person for a person, so that means that one of our officers gets on scene immediately, they're trained to go into the building. Some of the things that we've done going back since probably 2008, 2009, we pre-planned all our schools, meaning that we went out, we did threat assessments on all the schools, we point out faults, say, like, you know, locks or doors, or this door is pro, and stuff like that. That's a continuing process we do every year, year and a half with the school district. Our officers, they're trained in active shooter, have trained not only in private schools, but the public schools. We've done it with administrative staff, we've done it with the teachers. We're also planning on doing a tabletop exercise in July with the school district in response to an active shooter. Our officers will go back into the fall, meet with the teachers again. They usually do like a 45-minute program after school, you know, there's contractual issues with the teachers, but our officers will go in, they'll sit down, go over things that, you know, need to be addressed with active shooter responses. So, we have a great relationship with all the school districts, all the schools in our district, including the private schools. We trained these teachers. With the last two years of COVID, we haven't been able to get into the schools and do the training, but we will begin back into the schools now, in the summer, into the One of the things that we do, we meet monthly with Dr. Rucci, and we go over, we have discussions with anything that comes up in the school. We have a wonderful relationship with the school. The Save the Save program, if not, everyone's aware of that. It's an anonymous tip line, any kid can send anything in. That response goes to all the administrators in the school district, and also they go to me. So, we, like, right away, we're sending a text out, if it's a threat, if it's a, somebody needs help, it's a wonderful program that we're involved in with them, so. We have a very good relationship with the school district, and I would say, stand here and say, I feel that we're ready, but we hope we never have to, but, you know, God forbid it, if it happens, we should be ready.
And we have police officers dedicated to school district work, right? We've got, we have like a liaison officer-
We do, we have Detective Flynn, Detective Vernaccio. They're basically the liaisons through the schools, but we have a very open relationship with them. Like, it's a running joke, like, I'll hear from Dan Aran, Pete Donaghy, or one of the principals, probably like two, three times a week. Matter of fact, it is four times today alone, so just dealing with different issues in the school.
Well, thank you. Thank you for telling us that. Thanks for the reassurance. I suspect we might ask for more of it, but thank you.
So, I'll go over the crime report. I'm gonna start off, I'm gonna go a little out of order here. Every month, we've been talking about the mail thefts, how the mailbox, well, I announced overnight, we arrested three individuals from Brooklyn, New York, who came down and they hit the mailbox at Mill in Woodmere. We were actually able to source warrant on that vehicle today, and we recovered numerous checks, approximately 23 checks and other mails from local people here in town. So, our detectives are in the process of following up, contacting them. So, that's some good news there. There was 28 criminal arrests, one juvenile arrest, 150 traffic citations, 18 non-traffic, and 334 total parking tickets. There was a robbery, strong-arm robbery, the wild ball occurred on May 6th. A male went into a store, threatened to shoot the employee, stole cash and cigarette cartons, he fled on foot. There was a second robbery with a firearm, it was in the drive-through lane of the Santana Bank. A woman was waiting for the tube to come down. The moment she got the tube, the individual came out and robbed her at gunpoint and took the tube. There was another strong-arm robbery in the 800 block of Ardmore Avenue. A victim was parking her car, walking on the sidewalk, and was chased and tackled by a female wearing a red ski mask, taken was $1,500 in currency in a Louis Vuitton purse. There was a burglary in the 400 block on May 14th, 400 block of East Eagle Road. Resident returned home, found numerous electronics devices, eyeglasses, and other things missing. There was also burglary attempt in the uniblock of Princeton on 514. There was a domestic assault on 53, the subject was arrested. One murder vehicle theft overnight in 1900 block of Chestnut. They reported sometime between 11:30 PM and 5 AM, that is, 2012 Dodge Ram was taken. There was two attempts from autos, four bike thefts, and eight K-9 usages. And in reference to the mail theft I spoke to earlier, there was 18 mail fraud cases that occurred last month. So, hopefully with this latest arrest, it may curb a little bit of it, so. Any questions?
If I could, any flare-ups or developments in the catalytic converter thefts?
It's actually been quiet, knock on wood, but they seem to die down for whatever reason. Maybe somebody like who was behind them may have got pinched in the city, or it may like knock it down for a while, but we've been kind of fortunate on that end.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
How were the K-9 used?
They're used for, they're used for different things. Canines are used for drug searches, they're also used for tracking of suspects or lost individuals, or for apprehensions of, like, somebody flees from the police officers.
Were these all within Haverford Township or outside?
Some inside, some outside. It's a mix. Like, a lot of times what will happen is someone within the county, it could be the state police or some other local jurisdiction, may ask for a K-9, just like we may. If we don't have a K-9 working, not working that night, we'll ask for another jurisdiction to come in. Anything else? Was that less than three minutes?
All right, so we move on to next week's agenda. The very first item is a resolution designating an agent for the Winfield Drive flood mitigation study. Manager Berman, just want to quickly describe this to us.
That's a resolution that authorizes it to touch my manager to sign some grant documents.
Thank you, and that relates to work that we've done as a consequence of the continual flooding in Winfield Drive?
Correct, work that we will be doing, additional study work there.
Excellent, thank you. Our next resolution, 2268, is ARPA money for purchase of three Philips Tempest Pro cardiac defibrillator monitoring systems. Mr. Berman, do you want to describe those to us?
This is fairly straightforward. Chief McCann is here, if you would like to step forward and describe the equipment for us, that'd be terrific.
Here we are.
Yes.
Okay. The newest device, the device that we're purchasing, purchasing three of them, one to be assigned to my unit, one to the Deputy Chief's unit, and one as a backup and to the ERT medic, who goes out with our township SWAT team. So, this device, it's actually, takes the place of several devices that we have. It is the basic cardiac monitor, also monitors blood pressures, body temperatures, pulse oximetry, which are functions we have now, and can transmit those results to a receiving hospital unit. The new unit that we have does all that, as well as ultrasound, which is a device, as you know, there's different types of ultrasound, but in the pre-hospital environment, it's gaining ground for fast exams, looking in the abdomen for blood, as well as placement of IV catheters or endotracheal tubes. So, it's an additional certification. It has in title CO2 capnography, that measures expired carbon dioxide from the body. We can also sense carboxyhemoglobin for somebody who's been exposed to a carbon monoxide poisoning. We also had the devices, and you may have remembered purchasing these a little while ago, with the video laryngoscope system. So, once we place the device into somebody's throat to look for a trachea for placement of an endotracheal tube, that device is now built into the unit as well. So, we can basically just switch to a screen and look at the screen on that and do it. Now, personally, being that I'm one of the older medics now in the county, my favorite part to this is, it's no longer the 28-pound unit we have, it's now an 8.1-pound unit. So, that is such a bonus. But while expensive, the units are currently the state of the art. It is where this industry is going, and they are well-tested in that they've been used by the military now for about 10 years. That's a civilian version, but it's all the, in the internal portions and everything are all the same as that in the military. So, I do appreciate your support for these, for these units.
Chief, what will happen to the old units?
The company itself has given us credit for them, but doesn't want them back. So, they don't want to take them, so what we are going to do is look into either selling them back to another market, if there is one for it, or even explore avenues to perhaps donate them to- to units or to a service somewhere that doesn't have the current units or anything quite like it. For this week, though, the two, the two spare units will be up at Marion for the Curtis Cup. Okay, thank you.
I'm convinced. Let's buy them. Our next thing, we will be next week approving a non, we will be approving a civilian disability pension or a non-service-related illness. That is something that, the contents of which were properly discussed in executive session, but the specific action that we need to take on it will take place next week. And then finally, settlement of stipulation of council. Again, these are, we've done these before. These are different settlements of tax appeals that have, that we've come to a settlement with. We never do that independently. The school district and the county are also parties to tax appeals. So in most of the situations, we are just riding along in those matters. But they will be raised and addressed next week. The contents, the specific contents of those stipulations and settlements are appropriately in executive, confined to executive session. Our contracts and purchases start with the township building. We have, we needed to exercise, we needed to execute an emergency contract for the selective demolition and removal of the facade that everybody has seen here. Mr. Berman, anything we need to know?
Just that we've been doing an extensive amount of testing with our council and also with some experts in the building envelope field, and that is why we have delayed the removal of the rest of the stone. We needed to get that testing done. The testing is done, we don't have the final report.
Thank you. Our next contract and purchase will be a new boiler for the library. This is something that's been a long time coming, and something we have discussed before. This, this boiler will be, will not only work currently, but it will also, it is adequate to fit into any new expansion plans or any work we do at the library. If anybody else has any other comments on this, I welcome them. Parks and Recreation, capital purchase, the Grange.
Mr. Holmes, I have a question.
Yes.
Could someone explain a little bit more about how this boiler replacement, how it connects with whatever renovations are going to happen at the library, since I don't know much about construction?
As I understand, go ahead, Manager Berman.
Mr. Holmes, if, if you'd like, we can ask Dan Perry, our superintendent of buildings, to step forward and just describe how this is going to interface with the new renovation and expansion.
Excellent. He can go from the desk.
Yeah, hi. Your, your question again, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
I'm just asking, how do we know for sure that the new boiler that we're spending over $150,000 for will work? We renovate our library.
As opposed to the current oil boiler it has now, we went through some difficulties, obviously, with the using an oil as its source of energy. Not knowing the age of the oil tank underground is a big issue. But moving forward, these two new boilers that are integrated, like, for, able to communicate and just, like, the engineering for, like, using a natural gas is, will be environmentally cleaner and overall better efficiency going forward.
Well, I also understand they have greater capacity, so we'll be able to, to the extent that we expand the library, these boilers will be able to handle a larger load than the current boiler that's there.
Absolutely, because with the renovation, there will be a lot more square footage going forward, and these two will be able to handle that load.
And this was, I mean, this was done with full kind of evaluation and work of the, of people at the library, specifically with the renovation in mind, isn't that correct?
Yes, with the entire design team and also the board.
And just a follow-up, we did meet with Ken Matthews and the folks who have already been working with the library design team, and they've looked at what we're proposing. And so that should give you some added comfort, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions, Commissioner?
I'm good.
Does any other commissioner have any questions on this issue? So Parks and Recreation, capital purchases at the Grange, pickleball and tennis courts?
We're going to be, you, you're asking me, right?
Yeah, Mr. Barrett.
Yes. Okay, so, yes, we are, there's four courts at the Grange. Two of them have been in severe disrepair for probably 10 years. Those two will be converted to six pickleball courts. We actually met with the neighbors there and had input from other wards in the township about the need for pickleball courts because pickleball courts that we have are used as much as any outdoor courts that we have. And they're used by a clientele that probably averages 50 or 60 years old. So it's our older residents that are enjoying them. The upper two courts will be just repainted and resurfaced, along with new fencing around the entire four courts.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Director Barrett? I will now move to Municipal Facilities, the Professional Energy Audit Contract. Ms. Matola, welcome to our meeting. You have a mic? I wish you'd come forward.
Commissioner Eileen is the Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation, has been working with the EAC on the RFP that we prepared for this project.
Welcome, Assistant Director.
Hi, thanks. So we had, we put out an RFP, we got two different auditors to give us all their information, and then the EAC reviewed everything. And then they had a lot more questions because they were looking for someone with expertise in ice rinks. So they went back and the company that they ended up picking, or I guess it would be a consultant firm, has, they're basically rich in experience with, they worked on Wells Fargo, the Flyers Indoor Arena. They did Academy of New Church and the Hill School Ice Rink. So they have a lot of expertise, so they were happy with it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay.
Actually, could I ask a question?
Yes, please.
So I see that with regard to the scope of services on this, it identifies, it looks like, six buildings, one of which being the township building that we're in right now. Was, is this, was any of this done when this township building was originally designed and put in, you know, and put into place? I'm just trying to see if there's any redundancy.
That's a fair question. Mr. Penoni, do you know the answer to that?
I don't know. I didn't design the building and I wasn't involved in the building.
Honesty in government is a real refreshing thing, so, thank you. Yeah, wow.
I mean, it's a fairly new building. Common sense would say yes. I can't imagine that it wasn't done, but I can tell you for sure that it was.
Well, I mean, just as a, from a common sense perspective, you know, it was bid out in the same process, building the outside wall. So doing an audit to sort of check the status of it might not be a bad idea.
That's a fair point, yeah.
Yeah, point taken on that one. And is the, the purpose of this to, I read through this, and it looks like the report, the end report is going to be multifaceted. I guess one of them is going to be a list of recommendations of efficiency upgrades that would be recommended for our facilities. Is that correct?
That is correct.
No further questions from me.
Thank you. I can speak from experience that the stadium needs it, so I'm glad we have somebody particularly, particularly, with particular expertise in ice rinks. I skated in the fog two weeks ago during that really, really bad heat wave. Havreford Reserve Stormwater Basin Conversion. Mr. Penoni, is this something you're prepared to speak about right now?
This one I could speak on, on behalf of. So, 13, 14 years ago, the developer Havreford Reserve built a series of basins. Two of the basins were located in the vicinity of the Community Recreation Center. When the Community Recreation Center was being built and permitted, it was more cost-effective to utilize the basins built by the developers to accommodate the erosion and sedimentation control. The developers were going to close those basins out 11 years ago because they were done. We postponed that for a period of time, and we are now closing those basins out. That was all done by agreement between the developer, us, and the permitting agency, which was the Delaware County Conservation District. Put out the, basically removing the sediment from the basins, modifying the outfall structure, turning them into permanent stormwater basins, and removing them from the sedimentation basin. Two bids. We received the bid at the end of last week. We'll tabulate those bids and give the board a tabulation of both bids with all the details for next week's meeting. The low bidder is a contractor we've dealt with in the past. That low bidder is premier, premier concrete company from Brooklyn, PA.
Mr. Penoni, your candor about what you don't know simply adds your credibility about what you do know. Thank you very much for that. Fine. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Penoni? We move to the Woodcrest Avenue Sanitary Sewer Replacement. Mr. Mariani, anything to report on that?
We, we don't have the.
We have, I'm sorry, do you want to report? And Dan, tell me I say wrong. So, I, Wood, Wood, excuse me. Woodcrest Avenue in the Armour section, we have two blocks with sanitary sewer that dates back its construction to the 20s, 1920s. Old clay pipe, we saw sinkholes and sediment in the vicinity of the sanitary sewer and laterals. Tall vise lateral with Danny's group, inspected it, looked at it, came to the conclusion after, after looking at different options, that the pipe has to be replaced. It's past the end of its useful life. It has, it has broken apart in too many different places. Received bids the same day as the basins, which was June 3rd. We again received two bids. The low bidder is a company in, again, we'll tabulate those bids and give the board all the details. The low bidder is a firm called AJ Jurek out of Aston, PA.
So my neighbors on Woodcrest were very concerned as they saw orange paint, yellow paint, blue paint, and things like that all over, and were curious about the scope of the job and the timing of the job. When is it we plan to do this?
So if it gets awarded, if it gets awarded next week, then contracts have to be executed, insurance has to be provided by a contractor, the contractor has what we call shop drawings. Then they have to procure material. We'll know well ahead of time when a shovel goes in the ground, but it most likely won't be before August.
Great.
And then we'll also have a good feel for the duration.
Okay. Do we have an idea of the scope of it? Will the road be closed?
The road will be, oh, I'm sorry. The road will be left open for, it'll be closed for through traffic, it'll be open for local traffic. At night, the trenches, similar to what we just did, right off of Newglan Avenue, the plate, the trenches.
The plates?
Yeah, plates.
Plates them so people can drive. Okay, excellent.
Storage material always gets a little difficult.
Lights up for the whole time.
Yep. Busy street, so it's a tight job. It's not an easy.
Oh, I know. I know. It's not a busy street by choice of the people who live on Woodcrest, I can tell you that, but it is a major cut through.
Yeah, busy in terms of pipe, too. There's a lot of laterals. As Dan will tell you, lateral work gets difficult.
That is a tightly, that is a densely compacted neighborhood. There's a lot of homes on that street. All right, well, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions about that? One last thing. Deputy Chief, if you would report from, from there, just the Curtis Cup happening this weekend at Marion, what can people expect?
The Curtis Cup will be starting, traffic will be shutting down Thursday afternoon at 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Only on Thursday. Starting on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday on Armour Avenue, it'll be shut down from 5:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Local residents will be able to get to their properties, will be no issues with that. People living on Armour Avenue will be able to get to their houses, and the people living back in Tunbridge area and all the golf house, they'll be able to get to their house. They're expecting anywhere from like 3,000 to 5,000 people to show up for the event.
Okay. So not unlike the Walker Cup from '09, but not anywhere approaching the US Open?
Nowhere near the US Open.
Okay. And the closure is Havreford Road to Darby?
That's correct. And it'll be manned by officers. All, any road closure will be manned by officers.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, we will have three proclamations for consideration next week. A proclamation for the Emergency Medical Service.
Emergency Medical Service recognition.
We'll also have a proclamation relating to June being Pride Month, and we will have a proclamation commemorating Juneteenth. Any questions or comments on those anticipated acknowledgements and proclamations? Anything else from anybody?
Would we like to report that the Planning Commission is meeting on Thursday evening to discuss and have the first review of the comprehensive plan that is currently on our website? Perhaps Kelly Kirk could step forward and just report on that briefly?
Absolutely. You've got 75 seconds.
So yes, as a reminder, this Thursday is going to be our first public meeting about the comprehensive plan. I believe most of the steering committee is going to be here to answer any questions. Our consultant is coming to do a presentation. We'll be explaining, you know, all the changes that are proposed, everything, you know, a summary about the plan.
That will be here?
It'll be here, Thursday night, 7 o'clock.
Public is invited?
Right, all is invited. We'll be taking comments and questions and concerns and all of those things, and we'll take those ideas and concerns and opinions into consideration.
Do we know if the meeting will be recorded?
It will be recorded. It's the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, so they're always recorded.
Excellent.
And then we will be moving on from there. The Planning Commission may or may not make a recommendation that night, probably not, I highly doubt it, before it eventually comes to the board for a public hearing, followed by adoption.
Do we do a public hearing and, can we do a public hearing and adoption at the same meeting?
Well, the public hearing would be separate. In the past, we have done a public hearing prior to the work session and then had the vote the following meeting.
Are we reasonable to expect to do this in August, or is there an attempt to do it in July?
We have discussed not holding the public hearing until at least September to make sure that everybody is, you know, back in from vacation, school started.
I guess after 35 years, what's a month?
Right, exactly, exactly.
I think the idea.
Between friends, yeah.
I think the idea was actually October.
October?
Yeah.
Excellent.
October works too.
Good, get everybody over the.
The idea of being at the back of the school and everything, that you want as many people with the availability to come as possible.
Are we broadcasting this meeting on all of social media and everything to get the word out about it?
Yep, we've been putting it on, it's on our website. The draft plan is also on our website for anybody that wants to view it. We've been putting it on, or not we, the IT department has been putting it on Facebook, Twitter. There's been multiple emails that have gone out. I know the Civic Council and HPD have been adding it to their new emailed newsletters. Judy, I think I saw it in your newsletter as well. So it's, Dave put out a constant contact, I think, last week. So we've, we're doing our best, let everybody know.
Oh, excellent. Thank you, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add on the issue?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
People aren't able to attend in person. Should they send emails or the best way for them?
We are, we'll be happy to take any comment or consideration into any emails. I believe the email address is compplan@havtp.org.
I believe that's correct. Otherwise, they can email me or Kelly, of course.
Either one's fine. It's still going to come to me anyway.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Yeah, wonderful.
Is there anything else any other commissioner would like to speak about? Well, to the extent I broke the law, I take full responsibility, but it is 8:34. I will consider a motion to adjourn.
No movement.
We are adjourned.